We'll be discussing the 2010, 2011 budget message. We'll also talk about the accounts 0110 Town Council to account 0740 Building Official, also looking at Budget's account 0810 Police to account 0880 Emergency Medical Services, and then other matters of interest and concern. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Alfred to review the overview of the 2010, 2011 municipal budget program. Steve?
Okay. In starting out tonight, I have prepared an overview of the budget before we get to the budget message. Because I think that this year, more than any year that I can recall, there are a number of factors that are going to play into the policy decisions associated with the development of the budget document. Many of those are referred to in the budget message, but I want to try to provide in capsule a summary of the things that we need to be aware of and understand before the council makes final decisions, and also appreciate the fact that the council will be called on to make decisions in advance of some information being available to them as it relates to the state budget. So in terms of the general overview, there's approximately eight items that I want to touch on. One is the state budget projections, both for 2010 and 2011. Second is the influence that the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act funding will have on the state budget. Third is how the supplemental 10 budget, the budget that was submitted by Governor Kucheri in December of 2009, for the 2009-10 year, will impact the council's budget for the fiscal 11, as well as the state's governor's proposal for fiscal 11. I also want to look at what the loss associated with general revenue sharing and motor vehicle reimbursement means to the development of the municipal budget. I also will touch on, for the first time, what the preliminary numbers indicate for revaluation, which will come into play in this budget as far as tax levy is concerned, and tax rate. Also, based on the disclosure on Saturday of the commissioner's recommendation for the establishment of an education aid formula, its attendant impact, or potential impact, on 2011, as well as just a general statement as far as local revenue concerns. So in starting out, the first item that I want to make sure people are aware of is the dire straits that the state of Rhode Island is in, in terms of their budget and their budget development. The budget that's been prepared and presented by the governor suggests that they would be able to end the 2011 year with a $1.6 million surplus. Based on the out-year expenditures to available revenue estimates that are provided by the budget office, they're forecasting that they would have expenditures of $362.2 million more than they had available revenues in fiscal 12. Some of that is associated with the ERA money that will not be available in 2012. That number is compounded in 2013, where the forecast is that they'd be $416 million in expenditure requirements over available revenues. It jumps in 2014 up to $457, and the prediction by the budget office is over $535 million by the time we get to fiscal 15. I think that the summary of out-year expenditures to available revenues is a clear indication that reinstatement of local aid to cities and towns, either through schools or municipal government, is not going to occur anytime soon. I would also suggest that there have been other out-year estimates that would place the imbalance at higher dollar amounts if, in fact, economic recovery continues as a jobless recovery, rather than seeing more people back to work. So when we look at the local budget, we also have to look at what the state budget is going to do and how it's going to impact the local budget development, both on the municipal side and the school side. A second question that I've had asked several times is, what's the impact of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act on the state budget? And the slide that I'm providing at this time shows what the ERA program funds have been since the inception of the program in 2009 through the 2011 estimate. You can see that in the current year, there's $252 million of the state budget which is coming from federal funds. That number will decline to $217 million in the 11 budget that's been proposed by the governor. After 2011, those funds will dry up. I would also note that the $217 million that's shown for the 2011 year in the governor's budget is inclusive of approximately $95 million that has not been appropriated by the U.S. Congress. There's no reason to believe that they will not provide an extension of that program through December 31st. The program would expire on December 31st of 2010. The continuation of it for an additional six months is the $95 million. The governor's budget assumes that those dollars will be available. The enhanced FMAP, which is the Federal Medicaid Assistance, is really where the lion's share of the federal money is going. That money is allotted across state budget lines to deal with various Medicaid-associated programs. So you can see the impact that that budget will have on 12, particularly in view of the fact that those assistance programs at the state level will be very difficult to cut back. So it means that there'll have to be a reinstatement of state-generated revenues to replace those. That's one of the reasons that we're seeing the projection for the out-year projections for expenditures in excess of available revenues. Now I want to concentrate for a minute on the fiscal year 2010 supplemental budget revisions that the governor submitted in December of last year. Again, this is for the year that started on July 1st of 2009 and expires on June 30th of 2010. As you can see from the chart, and this is right out of the budget document, we're looking at the governor's recommendation of $125 million of the $220 million that he is trying to close the budget gap on, coming from locally-associated revenue takebacks. That's with the motor vehicle excise tax, where he had proposed the third and fourth quarter payment to be removed for $65 million. And it also involves aid to education, where his supplemental budget proposed a 3% reduction in state aid to education across the boards. And it also includes what the governor anticipates would be the savings associated with an initiative that he's put forward, which is pension reform. That pension reform would remove COLAR benefits from all teachers that were not eligible to retire before, well, it'll be on the date of passage, but the legislation that he proposed would be for an October 1 of 2009 eligibility date. That's the same legislation that he had proposed in the development of the 910 budget that was rejected by the General Assembly five months earlier. My concern here is that if they were forecasting in December a $220 million state deficit or revenue shortfall, as they would frame it, they've lost $33 million when they had to put the third quarter motor vehicle payment in. If the COLAR, as proposed by the governor, receives the same rejection that it received in June of 2009, it would mean approximately $26 to $27 million of that December solution would not be available to close that budget gap. So there's $59 million potentially between COLAR and the third quarter payment on motor vehicles. That's out of play, if you will, if the COLAR is not acted on by the General Assembly. And my personal feeling is that that is not going to occur. When I look at the supplemental budget for the 2010 year, there's several other notable concerns that I would express, and some of them are as follows. One is that the budget also includes $21 million in the sale, one-time revenues. This is the sale of various state properties or conveyance of state properties to quasi-public authorities. But it's a $21 million revenue intake that wouldn't be available in the 2011 year. He's also proposed the delay of repayment on what was the 2009 rainy day use, which is about $20 million. In addition to the monies that he believed the COLAR would save on the local level that would then be scooped by the state in a reduction of state aid, there's another $12 million in state savings because the state pays 40% of what the contribution rate is for the employer. So you pick up another 12 on the 59, so you're now up to over $70 million of the $220 million that does not seem attainable, based on what the governor had presented. The other concern that I have is that while they were forecasting in December a $219 million revenue shortfall, that there may be additional revenue shortfalls that will come forward before the May Revenue Estimating Conference is concluded. So my concern is that the inaction of the General Assembly in reaction to the governor's proposal really creates a difficulty for municipalities in trying to determine what state revenues will be for the 2010 year before we even start to deal with the 2011 year. Let me now move on to the governor's proposed 2011 budget.
Steve, I'm sorry, for me. Just, all this sounds impossible for everyone to enact what they need to enact. What kind of leeway do we have for time delays here, from local towns as well as the state? What kind of time can be borrowed here to try to figure out priority lists of awful worse?
Well, I think that you'll see in the municipal budget that we've addressed the issues as best that we can. I think that, you know, from a South Kingstown perspective, we're still very strong financially. We will be able to accommodate whatever comes our way in the 2010 year and 2011. If you recall, we had required departments to submit a 5% reduction in expenditures for the 2010 year. Most of that direction was a result of losing third and fourth quarter payments. With the third quarter payment being made of $521,000, we do not envision that we will be in any type of a deficit position for, an operating deficit for the 2010 year. In fact, I'm forecasting at this point approximately a $580,000 surplus. As far as the 2011 year is concerned, candidly, they can't hurt us much more than they already have. There's $330,000 that's budgeted in state aid that's not pass-through money. So even with the loss of that, we would be able to adjust to that. The real problem will come in, Jim, in terms of understanding what the implications are as far as education aid. I've referenced that in my budget message, and we'll get into that a little bit later. But if I get back to the 2011 year, the forecast was $427 million in revenue shortfall that the governor put forward. To be able to address portions of that, he was going to address additional reductions in municipal and local education aid. His 2011 budget, you need to remember, is predicated on the fact that the 2010 supplemental budget is adopted as presented by the governor. I've already gone through the reasons why I don't think that there's a reasonable expectation that that will occur. Therefore, the 2011 numbers are suspect. If 2010 supplemental was adopted as presented by the governor, his proposal for 2011 calls for a 3.8% reduction in education aid, and it also includes additional pension savings of $32 million. This is assuming that the COLAR is done away within 10, and therefore, he would take the benefit of the reduced contribution for pension as a reduction in state aid to education. And I've got much more detailed explanation of that in the budget message. The budget also includes the complete removal of the motor vehicle reimbursement, the tax reimbursement, which is worth $135 million. I caution the council that the way supplemental 10 is written, and in fact, there's no language in the 2011 budget that deals with the motor vehicle excise tax, because from the governor's perspective, as long as his 2010 supplemental is approved, he doesn't need to address motor vehicles in 11 because the act has already been killed in its totality. That means that what we're looking at is, if the motor vehicle tax is removed, the way it's been positioned in the supplemental budget, it would remove an entire paragraph that, one, set what the motor vehicle tax rate was; two, prevented municipalities from charging more for a vehicle whose assessment value increased from one year to the next; and, three, does away with the abatement of the $6,000. It also requires, based on the drafting, that the entire value of the motor vehicle assessments that were abated in the past would be reinstated in the 2011 year. Those issues have to be addressed by the General Assembly. The General Assembly can and may do away with the motor vehicle excise tax reimbursement to cities and towns in fiscal 2011. However, there needs to be additional direction provided on whether that entire amount's going to be reinstated on the roll, and I'll explain to you why. But before I get to that, let me just go with the loss of state aid. This chart is in the budget message and is also a part of this PowerPoint. And essentially, what the chart shows is that over a three-year period, the municipal government has lost over $3 million in state revenue takeback to the cities and towns. This isn't state money. This is money that the state has collected in income and sales tax from our residents that will no longer be forthcoming and will be used for state purposes, rather than to particularly reimburse the motor vehicles. The one-year loss is about $1.86 million. That equates to about 15% of the municipal budget net of what we pay for education transfers. So what we're looking at is 15% of the net municipal budget, which is around $20 million a year, that had been contributed through state revenue sharing and motor vehicle tax reimbursement, will be lost in the 2011 year. The next slide that I've provided, and for those following along at home, the PowerPoint can be opened up on the town's website to be able to see all of the detailed numbers. The preliminary numbers provided by the revale company indicate that real estate values in South Kingstown will be reduced by 16.2% for fiscal 2011. Residential will be down about 17.7%. Commercial, about 7%. And the industrial and utilities will shape out 1 at 9 and utilities at 1%. The net effect will be a loss of taxable property of about $846 million out of what had been a roll of about $5.2 billion. So we're losing about 16%. On the land values, land is down about 22%, and the building values are down about 11%. We anticipate that the revale notices will be in the mail probably second week in March for each of the individual property owners to see how their property is being addressed in the revale. But at this point, the major number, I had estimated a 15% reduction in my budget message, it'll be coming in at around $16.2 million. Yes, Jim?
I was just going to ask you, on the land numbers, between 2003, 2006, the previous revale, I know that was the biggest increase. By chance, do you have those numbers, land versus building, the '03, '06?
No, I've got the current roll numbers there, Jim.
Right, that's okay. It just looked a lot larger, if I remembered correctly, than what we're looking at here, down 22.
Well, the land values, I believe, in the last revale would have been higher than the building values, and that's normal that you would see because the building values are not going to change that substantially.
I certainly concur. I just thought land had a 30, 40% upside at that time, but I just can't remember what the numbers were.
Well...
That's okay, yeah, I just...
But what we're looking at here is around a 22% reduction on the land values. I've also created this chart to demonstrate what the property tax impact is associated with revaluation and the motor vehicle revisions. Because this is where it gets quite complex. What I'm showing here is that the tax levy would be $63,560,000 without revaluation, and we would have approximately a 12-cent rate increase to be able to raise the $955,000 in additional tax levy. So as I put in the budget message, instead of a $12.09 rate, it would be $12.20. It would mean, on the average house, about $49 in increased tax liability. However, with the revaluation, if there were no changes in the motor vehicle, so that we still had the $6,000 exemption on each of the motor vehicles valued over $6,000, it would mean to generate the $63,560,000, we'd have to have a rate of $14.56. Roughly, it would mean that the average house would be paying about $42 less than it was if the revaluation hadn't occurred. Reason that being is we're only looking at that portion of the roll that's residential in nature, and the reductions on the commercial and industrial base was significantly less than on residential. But with the revaluation, and if the motor vehicle change were to occur as is presented in the supplemental 10 governor's budget, we would have to add the money back onto the roll that's been exempted since 1998, when that program was put into place. And essentially, we would be raising $4.2 million in motor vehicle taxes, rather than the $1.9 million that we would raise if, in fact, the exemption were in place. So you'd be raising $2.3 million more from motor vehicles than you had in the prior year. And that goes hand in hand with the fact that the state was reimbursing those $2.1 million last year, based on the increase in taxable motor vehicles. Even without the $6,000 exemption being lost, we'd pick up another $5 million in taxable property. The $2.3 million is what the state would owe us if the $6,000 exemption were to stay in place. But what that means is that the homeowner would pay about $228 less on their real estate bill than they had in the current year. That's the good news. The bad news is, they'd pick up $113 worth of new taxes per motor vehicle, and if they had two cars, they didn't pick up a $226 increase, which would net us down to a negligible difference of $2. The question, though, is whether or not, you know, the entire levy would have to be used on motor vehicles, or whether it would come out of the real estate. And this is one of the reasons I'm presenting this before the budget message, is to say, these are some of the questions that I can't answer until I see the statutory revisions that the General Assembly is going to make on the supplemental 10 and on the adoption of a 11 budget. I can show you what the different options are. I can show you what the fiscal requirements and implications are, but I can't tell you what it will be because we have to wait until the General Assembly acts on these issues. It was certainly hoped that the General Assembly would have taken quicker action on the supplemental 10. Certainly, it worked to the municipalities' advantage that they did not take action on it before the third quarter payment was due. There are several people that are suggesting that they hope that they wait till after the fourth quarter has been paid as well. But obviously, based on the numbers that I've provided to you on the state budget deficiencies, we're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in another.
Steve, while you're turning that page, if I've got this correct, the line in the sand, then, is with no motor vehicle change, with property values assessment off 16.2%. If your home has dropped the 16.2% in value...
That's right.
Your tax liability will be equal to what it was in our current year.
Based on the theoretical model that I've produced, the answer is yes. And again, we've got to refine the revaluation numbers before June 15th, and we have to determine whether the state takes action as far as how they're going to deal with the motor vehicles, or whether they're going to provide direction on that. So those are some of the open questions that I need to make sure that the council is aware of, and maybe it's just a question of welcome to my world and my frustration, but it's, I want you to understand what the issues are that the General Assembly needs to deal with. Because I really think that one of the things that needs to be done is, once we get through with the budget hearings, is I really would recommend that the council bring the local legislators back in for the same type of discussion, on what the implications are that we see at the state level, and how those impact us at the municipal level, and how the timing of decisions associated with General Assembly action really impacts the The next item that I wanted to just bring into focus is the funding formula proposal that's been put forward by the Commissioner of Education. This has got a lot of play. I want to make it clear that, one, there is no legislative act that's been introduced in the General Assembly to put forward the education aid formula as prepared and recommended by the Commissioner. There is legislation for education aid formulas that are under consideration, and in fact, one, I believe, has been submitted in the House, but it is not directly associated with the proposals that are coming from the Commissioner. The Commissioner's proposal, and this is straight from the PowerPoint that had been provided to the press on last Friday, shows that the education formula would provide $8,295 per student as a core instructional funding amount. It also would provide for that number of students that are eligible for free or reduced lunch... lunch program, an additional 40% of that $8,200, or I think it's around $3,800. The third component is a ratio that looks at the revenue's ability to generate tax dollars. This is a very complicated formula that looks at the square root of taking the square of the equalized value of the community's tax roll and factoring it by their median family income. This provides what a municipal share or state share should be. And the fourth component is that the categorical funding, there's different components that would be funded outside of the education aid formula. There are quite a few things that are open to discussion here, such as why transportation has been removed from the core instructional amounts that are being considered. The estimates that have been provided by the state education commissioner would suggest that South Kingston would lose approximately $3.8 million, and approximately a half a million a year we would be deducted from our education aid until we equaled what the formula said South Kingston was entitled to. Let me say this, having reviewed the formula, I would request that I get all of the data dumps that are used to be able to produce the numbers used in the formula. I would like to see where the data came from, how timely the data is, what the frequency of update would be, where the formula used, as well as to determine whether or not all communities are being considered in a similar manner. I don't think it's worth discussing a formula until we see what the raw data is that's used to develop a formula. There's many questions. The state also was an advocate in terms of providing bonuses to those school systems that regionalized. Those regional school systems now would be severely injured based on this formula. The formula also suggests that the city of Central Falls would be required to come up with new property taxes, while, in fact, Central Falls School System today is fully funded through the state of Rhode Island. So where those dollars would come from, from a very weak tax base, to be able to provide for a basic education plan, isn't addressed other than saying that this is the formula and this is how it works. Why some communities that are of great taxable value would see increases in aid when they're already high-performing schools also introduces questions for discussion. It's important to note that the formula hasn't been put forward as statutory language. It has not been introduced. It has been presented as a proposal for consideration. If it generates the necessary discussion, there may be refinements and adjustments that will be warranted before any final form would be considered by the General Assembly. But this has created a great deal of discussion at this point, and certainly, if it were instituted as presented, would have profound impact on the South Kingston school system, not just for one year, but over, I believe it's eight years before we would be up to what the formula requirements are. Other issues that would have to be addressed include, how does this education aid formula impact municipalities as far as maintenance of effort requirements under existing state All of those issues are open for discussion, and I really think need to be brought forward to our General Assembly representatives to ensure that they understand what the implications are of the multiple changes that are currently pending at their desk, whether it be motor vehicles, excise tax elimination, whether it be the 3% reduction in the 2010 school budget education aid across the board, the 3.8% education aid reduction across the board in the 2011. All of these items have direct impact on how our schools will be funded in the 2010 and 2011 year. This is, as I mentioned earlier, the first time that I've really seen a necessity to bring forward the relationship with the state budget to our local budget development process. But because there's so many open questions that require answers from the state, I felt it incumbent on me to bring those forward tonight. If there's no questions on that, I'll move forward to the budget message at this point.
Any questions for Steve on all this good news? No? No, Steve, you can keep moving. Thank you.
Maybe, Steve, while you're looking up that, has there ever been a study by General Assembly or previous governors on weaning ourselves off the property tax to put it under either sales or personal income?
I'm not aware of any, Jim, that would look at that. There has been studies done in terms of changing income and sales tax for the state and coming up with a different tax mechanism on grocery receipts. However, I have not seen that there's been any actions taken to look at doing away with the property tax. But property tax in Rhode Island is one of the higher taxes across the country. I think we're in the top five or six, as far as the yield that comes from property tax, as far as both state and local revenue generation on a yearly basis. So it is a problem, and as the state sees all of these problems coming forward with forecasted revenue shortfalls, I think we're going to see even a greater emphasis on the local property tax burden, because if communities are going to want to provide more than a basic level of support for both municipal and school services, it's going to fall back on that property tax.
Thanks.
Okay, if we move on, and for those that are following along, we're starting on the budget message, which is page one, and each of the pages are identified as M1 through The first chart on page one shows the eight funds of the town's budget program. We're looking at the general fund, which is the program that funds municipal services and acts as really the large fund, and is the only fund that's responsible for generating property tax levy requirements. We're proposing on the general fund a $72.78 million program for the 2010-2011 year. That's $134,000 less than we anticipate spending in the current year, and $760,000 less than we actually spent in the 2008-2009 year. So what we're suggesting is that we will be spending less money than we did two years ago when this program starts. To accomplish that, we've done many things. We've dealt with reductions in program, reductions in personnel, reductions in capital programming, and reductions in debt service. As the council's aware, debt service, we've worked for the last several years to reduce debt impact as a means of reducing what the property tax requirements are for debt service on a yearly basis. It's certainly proving that we did it at the right time. But all of those will generate a budget which will be about 1% less than what was budgeted in the 2009-2010 year. It's a $667,000 reduction from the current year. If we move to page two, page two provides a more detailed look at where the dollars are spent within the general fund. Our operating program is down a half a percent, or $109,000. The operating program is inclusive of everything from the town clerk's office, the stipends for the town council, through the police department, EMS, all municipal services. As noted, our debt service for municipal is down about $112,000. Some of this is directly related to the actions that the council approved last November, where we refinanced a good deal of debt based on the actions of the finance director in putting that deal together. We're also looking at the capital budget, down $185,000 from what it had been in the prior year. This, again, has been accepted by the council in your adoption at the end of January. On the transfer of the schools, we're recommending no increase, and this is the same transfer dollar amount as it was in the 2008-2009 year, 2009-2010 year, and will be the same in the 2010-2011 year. Overall, we're looking at the municipal program will be down 1.84%, and based on the reductions associated with school debt service, the schools will be down about a half a percentage point. The net, about 1% for that $666,000. Our revenue sources, which are also on page two, show us that we're looking at a current year tax levy which shows at $1,016,000, and we're seeing the loss of the state revenues at $1,948,000. So what we're looking at is that major impact to the municipal budget in the 10-11 year directly associated with state revenues that we've already spent some time on. If the budget were adopted as presented, and we did not have a revaluation, and we did not have the change in the motor vehicles, so that it's steady state, when I say steady state, I mean that we can compare apples to apples, current year to next year, we would look at a tax rate requirement of $12.20 or $0.21 or $0.12 over the $12.09 rate that we talked about. Certainly, individual property owners will be impacted in different manners. If they are seeing reductions in their assessment values of 9%, or if they, they'll see a higher tax burden, if they have something at 25%, they'll see a lower tax burden. The only thing I can give you is the average midpoint for residential properties in the If we move on to page M3, I document that even with a 15% reduction, and this is what was estimated at the time the message was prepared, that the $12.09 for the 2010-2011 would require a $14.23 rate. But the taxpayer would still pay, on an average home, the same amount of taxes, because the rate will change, but the levy wouldn't change. The levy increase that is there is the levy that was in for the 2009-2010 year. So what I'm documenting, and I think it's important for people to recognize, is that while the levy doesn't change, the rate to generate that levy would change. The bottom of page M3 documents the budget broken out by school purpose and municipal purpose. And this is how we do the calculation to come up with the $12.21, and again, showing a role without revaluation. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, because I think the council's fully versed in the issues involving the property tax rate. So if I can move to page four, the tax distribution is also shown there. Again, this shows that we're looking at $995,000 in additional tax levy, or 1.54% increase. As you can see in the middle of the page, the tax levy growth last year was 1.22%. If this budget was adopted as presented, it would be up 1.54%. The average over the last five years would be 3.9. But when you look back, the town was increasing the tax levy by the amount of the cap in the 2007, '08, and '09 years. So we were at 538, where the cap was 5.5. We were at 525 the year that 3050 came into place, and 5% two years ago. Last year, based on economic conditions, the town held the tax levy increase to 1.22. This year, we're looking at the 1.5, even though we're losing the $1.9 million from the state. Moving on to the bottom of the page, we have statutory authority to raise the levy by 4.5% under the 3050 legislation. What that means is we are $1.9 million below what the cap allowance would be if we were to increase to the 4.5%. It was never our intention to come close to the 4.5% based on economic conditions within the community, but under that statutory authority, you would be able to raise $67.4 million, where our levy would be looking at $65.5 million, or that $1.9 million less. Moving on to page five, this shows the distribution of where property taxes go. If we take all municipal debt, and that's inclusive of school debt, as well as the municipal program, 25 cents of every dollar stays with the municipals, and 74.6 or 75 cents is used for transfer to the schools. This is down from about an 80-20 split two years ago, and most of the reason behind that decline in education level support is the freezing of the property tax transfer to the schools at the $47,909,000. Moving on, I've provided a snapshot on the bottom of page M5 that shows what we saw the tax roll to be projected at without revaluation and with revaluation. I needed to provide this to be able to show what the steady state would be. Moving on to page M6, M6 shows a chart showing what the motor vehicle ratios are. As you can see, in the 2010 year, we had a roll of $99 million in taxable property. If the $6,000 exemption is removed, and we're required to put that back on the roll, that $99 million will increase to $228 million. That's what we talked about earlier, around $226 per house that would come out of MVs rather than coming out of real estate. Moving on, I provide the documentation on how we established the levy, including the overlays, the erroneous assessments, and the elderly abatements being knocked out. And again, what we're forecasting here is that we would collect about 98.1% of the levy during the current year. M7, we begin to talk about the different revenue sources. One is the prior year tax and interest. Those are staying relatively the same. Prior year taxes in the current year are generating more than had been anticipated, so we've upped that by $115,000. Payment in lieu of taxes, I've given you detail as to the seven different entities that do not pay property taxes but pay in lieu of taxes. We're not seeing any changes there. We're going from about $245 million to $249 million. On the transfer from other funds, we will be seeing an increase of approximately $33,000 on recreation fair share fees. We're taking more out of the fair share fees to pay down debt associated with recreation projects. The same holds true with the open space fund. The same holds true with the open space fund. There, we're taking dollars that are held in reserve, an additional $25,000 to defray costs associated with open space acquisitions that have been bonded over the last several years. Net, we're showing about a $20,000 increase over the current year. The loss on the $44,000 for the South Road School Reserve transfer is because we took two years of transfer in the current, or we budgeted at two years in the 2009, 2010 year, and that needs to be scaled back. Moving on to page M8, transfers from the school department for services provided by the municipality are relatively constant, it's about a $15,000 change. Most of that is in the energy services transfer for debt service. This is when we bonded to provide energy improvements with light, was it lighting now?
Yeah.
For the lighting in the high school and a couple of elementary schools. We bonded for that over a five-year period, and what we're having is the savings from reduced energy expenditures, defraying the cost of the of the debt service on those, on that bond issue. Moving on, I provide the council with a detailed explanation on the state revenue program. And I think it's important to note that in the 2008, 2009 year, the governor deleted the general revenue sharing program to the local governments. We lost a half a million dollars that year. For the 2009, 2010 year, his proposal with the supplemental was to take out the third and fourth quarter payment. As I said earlier, we were successful in getting the third quarter payment, so the net loss to the community at this point is approximately, I believe it's about $500,000. So the third quarter payment of the 521 was made. Moving on to page M9, the, this provides in capsule what the relationship of state aid losses are to the municipal budget, net of any education-related programs. And as you can see, we're really with a $20 million municipal budget, and we're losing 15 percent of that that budget, based on the reductions of $3 million over the three-year period. So this is the reason why restructuring of the municipal program is necessary, in addition to freezing transfers to the education program. I've already gone through the chart on a PowerPoint presentation that documents the loss in state aid. Unless there's questions, I'll move on. If we move on, there are really only two aids that we will be seeing. One is for library reimbursement, and second is for reimbursement for non-taxable property known as South County Hospital. Both of those aids, around $330,000, are dollars that we anticipate receiving as general aid this year. They're the only general aids that we will be budgeting for. Each of those are down from the, actually, the library aid is up a bit, but the percentage share for South County Hospital is down about $15,000. What the state did is they were supposed to be funding at 27 percent of the assessment value. They're now down to about 23 percent of assessment value, 24 percent of assessment value. There are other state revenues that the state takes credit for, but they're pass-through revenues. These are public services corporation taxes. We've talked about these in the past. Telecommunications corporations like the National Grid, AT&amp;T, do not pay local property taxes. What they're, what they do is they pay based on a state, a state tax, the state collects the tax and distributes it back on a per capita basis to municipalities. We're forecasting $271,000 from that source. The hotel tax is a second pass-through. That pass-through is that we get on the hotel tax, essentially, it's a 6 percent tax, of which the town gets 2 percent. For the 2010, 2011 year, we're estimating $108,000 in hotel tax income to the town, which is about the same as it was during the current year, maybe about $8,000 more.
That's an 8 percent tax, and we get 2, or is it 6?
It's a 6 percent tax, of which we get 2. We get 33 and a third percent of the 6 percent.
Thank you.
Meals tax is a 1 percent sales tax on all prepared foods. We're anticipating about $515,000 from this source. While the state suggests that this is state aid to the cities and towns, it's really a pass-through of money collected on behalf of the town within the community in which the service is provided. Reimbursement program with, this is, we're still receiving a small share of library construction reimbursement, and the motor vehicle phase-out, we've talked about that, I won't go into any more detail. School construction is still at 30 percent of the cost of both debt service principal and interest payments. We're anticipating about $948,000. This is reimbursing us for the expenses that we've already incurred to pay debt associated with eligible education projects. Moving on to page 11, locally generated revenues. I've provided you with a chart that shows those revenues that are changing either up or down by over $10,000. As you can see, the major loss here is in investment income. We had forecast a investment yield of 0.8 percent. That's not 8 percent, that's 0.8, eight tenths of 1 percent on the investments that we have. If we took what the investment yields are today, they're at about 0.6. So even if we went from the 0.8 to 0.6, we would lose on that $325,000 that's anticipated, about $75,000. So that's still a, a number that continues to erode. In past years, we've generated as much as, I believe, $1.5 million from this revenue source. Again, it's directly related to the economy. It's directly related to national policy as far as lending rates are concerned, and what the the yields are that are available through, through the town's investment program. Other losses that we expect that are economy-associated, building inspection fees, we're expecting a drop of about $35,000 from what we actually received in the 2008, 2009 year. We're also expecting drops on the library aid. Library aid will be down because the investment yields on the two endowment funds for Kingston and Peastale are both down. So we're losing about $19,000 there. Police revenue is down, but that's directly associated with us doing away with the TAP program, and there's a, while there's a loss in revenue there, there's also a reduction in the expenditure statement associated with overtime that was used to be able to provide those dedicated patrols for, for traffic regulation. Moving on to page 12, I've identified for you where non-business license fees are going. We're looking at about a $105,000 increase. We had anticipated a major drop in recording fees. We didn't see that. The recording fees continue to, to come in. Unfortunately, a lot of those are on recordings dealing with mortgages that are in difficulty, or properties that are being sold short. But the revenue we're forecasting is about an $88,000 increase over the current year. I've also shown you what the history is over the three-year period dealing with real estate conveyance tax. We're expecting that real estate conveyance will be up about $9,300 for the 2010, 2011 year. Rental of town property is a big winner for us this year, and where the winner is about $170,000. We're anticipating about $164,000 that will come from eight units of new rental cell carriers. Those would be located at the Public Works Garage, at the Public Services Building, as well as at the police station. We will be taking the income, which averages about $28,000 to $30,000 per year per, per cell, will be coming into the town's general fund. The cells that are on existing water tanks have been, continued to be used as revenue to the water fund. However, all of these additional units that are anticipated are forecast as revenue to the general fund. Should any of those deals fall through, we'll have to adjust that revenue down. At this point, I believe we've got, three of the eight have been put into place, and we expect over the next two months to complete the deals on the rest of those cell tower Library aid, as I mentioned, we're seeing endowments down with Kingston and Peastale by about $19,000. Investment income, I touched on that earlier. The chart that I provide on page 13 of the document is a chart that shows really two things. What the investment yields have been, as you can see, $1.4 million in 2007, but at that time, the investment, while we generated $1.4 million, we were seeing investment yields of in excess of 5 percent, where now we're down below 1 percent. So that's why we're forecasting the $325,000 in the 2010 year, and that'll be down in the 2011 year, based on the projections that Alan's making at this, at this time. We're also anticipating EMS revenues to be up this year. We're forecasting that we'll generate around $550,000 that goes into the EMS special reserve, and that a half a million of that will be brought into the general fund. That's about a $75,000 transfer increase over the current year. I've talked about the police revenues with the reductions on the traffic tribunal. We're down about $53,000 on projected revenues there. Also on page 14 is documentation on recreation program revenues. We're forecasting about $24,000 in new revenue over the current year's budget, and we're forecasting that we would reduce property tax need by about $27,000. I caution, all of the revenues that are anticipated in recreation programs, in self-supporting or in athletic leisure service programs, are based on program participation. If we don't have the program participation, the revenues will go down, but if we don't have the program participation, the expenditures of the program will be adjusted accordingly. So we, we may spend less dollars, but we'll take less dollars in. If the programs are utilized based on the forecast that have been made, will be about $24,000 to the good. If the program participation does occur, and we take in less than that $24,000, our expenditure statements will be adjusted downward accordingly. The last item in terms of dealing with the, the revenue statement is looking at the undesignated fund balance. As noted on page 15 of the budget message, we're looking at a undesignated fund balance of $9.3 million as of June 30 of 2009. That's about 12.7 percent of the 2009, 2010 budget. We're forecasting, as I mentioned earlier, almost a $600,000 surplus, and, again, the $600,000 surplus for the 9, 10 year is based on the fact that we received an unanticipated revenue of $522,000 on the third quarter revenue from motor vehicle tax. We certainly had to institute the reductions in program in advance of that February 1st payment. If that payment hadn't come in, we'd be forecasting now a surplus of around $70,000. What we're looking at is that there's $1.2 million that'll be committed to the 10, 11 year, so the undesignated balance as of June 30 of 2010 would be forecast today at $8.7 million, or around 12 percent. So we're losing about 70 basis points from where we are in the 2009, 2010 year. If we forecast going forward another year, we'd be down to about 11, 11.2 percent. It's important for us to be able to use a portion of the fund balance during these difficult economic times. It's also important for us not to become over-reliant on use of the undesignated funds, because as they continue to erode in size, and we get below 10 percent, or get close to the 10 percent threshold, one, it affects our investment income potential, and, two, it provides dangerous warning signs to the investment companies as to the ability for the town to continue to maintain its budget. Moody's looks at anything that goes from fund balance, which is in, in excess of your operating surplus for the year, as being a, operating with expenditures in excess of revenue. On a short-term basis, that's not a problem, but if it becomes a continuing practice, it's one that becomes a danger signal as far as the creditworthiness of the community. As the council's aware, South Kingston maintains the highest bond rating level in the state. I believe there's four other communities that, at this point, share that.
Is a total of four. Yeah, so three others is a total of four.
Three in a total of four, of a AA II standard. So that also speaks to discounted value as far as the rate of, of interest that we pay on any bonds that we put into permanent financing. So all of these things are interrelated. One can't be taken out of context or be used as a saving grace to reduce tax burden, when in fact, it will have impact on future years. That concludes the revenue component. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the expenditure statement. The expenditure statement starts on page 16. We talk about the different components of the budget, I think the council's well familiar with. The bottom of page 16 is a chart showing what the distribution is as far as the operating budget is concerned, and, again, you can see that we're talking about the $667,000 reduction from the current year, and the operating budget is down about a half a percentage Page 17 talks about the loss of the general revenue sharing, and us losing about $1.86 million in the 10, 11 year from what had been budgeted in 9, 10. What that means to us is that we started with a goal to be able to develop an operating program with no growth over what the current appropriation was. We've met that goal, but to be able to accomplish the goal, we had to reduce municipal workforce by 4.2 full-time people. We had to reduce part-time hours in many of the departments. In fact, seven departments are seeing reductions in their part-time personnel. We're also reducing contractual services and material acquisition accounts. The total of reductions that I've made is $539,783, as documented on page 17 of the In addition to that, capital budget and contingency reductions show about, we've taken out $735,000 from my operating program. These are changes that I would not be recommending were it not for the economic conditions that we're dealing with. Many of the reductions that are being proposed here are going to mean greater difficulty in providing the quality and level of service that the public is accustomed to and anticipates continually receiving. The, as, as we move forward, we'll go through the personnel reductions. The 4.2 people equate to about $263,000 in expenses. The part-time hours that we've cut back are another $84,000. Both of those numbers are inclusive of benefit costs, and those are documented on page 18 of the budget, budget message. The general personnel program, for the most part, is governed through labor contracts that we hold with four different organizations. The paragraph on page 18 documents what the conclusion was of each of the contract negotiations dealing with the police, EMS, Public Works, police dispatches, animal control. As noted in the, in the memo, we do not have As noted in the, in the memo, we do not have a signed agreement or negotiated agreement with NEA at this point. Rhode Island NEA represents non-supervisory personnel, particularly in the town hall or police, police department where non, where their civilian personnel, as well as in the public works and recreation programs. The three contracts that have been settled really had an objective of doing two things. One, requiring no salary increase in the nine, ten year, that was accomplished. Two, providing for two and a half, two and a quarter percent salary increases for the ten, eleven year. And three, providing for increases in the cost of employee co-shares for healthcare. All three of the contracts that have been completed will have employee co-shares at no less than fifteen percent by the close of the two thousand and twelve fiscal year. The detail is provided further on in the message, I won't take any more time on that at this point. That provides the structure for our personnel program for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year. If we move on to the personnel program, which is presented on page nineteen, I've provided a summary of all the personnel costs associated with the municipal general fund. Total cost of the program is ten point five million dollars. So it's about ten point five million out of the total twenty million dollar program that we have is in salary-related items. This is a eighty-eight thousand dollar increase over the current year, and that's inclusive of the two and a quarter percent increases for all personnel, as well as the cutbacks in the four point two positions, as well as the part-time help. If we look at page M twenty, M twenty gives a snapshot as to what the cost of salary and benefits are for the full-time and part-time program. Here, what we're seeing is total, total program cost is up sixty-five thousand dollars, which is inclusive of the salary program up eighty-eight and benefits down by twenty-four thousand. So the net is about a half a percent more for personnel than it was in the current year. And again, the reason why it's so low is because of the reductions that have been made in staffing. We're looking at the relationship of our personnel program to the overall operating budget constitutes about sixty-eight point two percent of the, of the overall budget. Bottom of page twenty shows the personnel that's been reduced. Two police officers, one equipment operator, one librarian, and point two recreation directors. The council's aware, we combined in the current year, the recreation director position and the senior services director position, the reduction is point two percent of the recreation director in this budget. Obviously, the seniors program saw the point eight reduction in the senior programming, but that's not general fund associated. But as far as general fund is concerned, it's a two hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollar reduction. If we move on to page twenty-one, page twenty-one details for the public and the council, what the values are associated with longevity schedules for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and year, eleven year, by each of the different labor groups. Longevity is equal to a cost of about three hundred and nine thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven. Hundred and thirty, thirty-two thousand of that is related to the police department and the remaining workforce, hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. When we look at the bottom of page M twenty-one, we talk about employee retirement severance costs. The town maintains a compensated absences reserve fund. Compensated absences reserve fund is used to account for dollars that are necessary at the time that people leave the employer of the town. This is to reimburse for unused vacation days, sick leave accruals that, that are compensable. We are anticipating that we will budget a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year for transfers to the compensated absences fund, and we're anticipating that we'll spend about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in, hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars in ten, eleven based on potential retirements that will occur during that period. The compensated absences fund stood at about four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars as of June of two thousand and nine, and it'll net down to the end of the two thousand and eleven year at about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Still a healthy fund balance to be able to deal with potential retirements. However, we will continue to look at where we underspend appropriation that's personnel associated, that we will bring that, those dollars and potentially transfer those into the compensated absences fund to have a greater impact on the future. We move on to page, page twenty-two. Page twenty-two provides the detail associated with the municipal employees' healthcare insurance program. As I mentioned earlier, our objective in contract negotiation was to deal with those employees that were hired prior to July of two thousand and two, that at, in two thousand and two were paying no co-share. The contracts have been negotiated where no later than January first of two thousand and twelve, all pre-two thousand and two employees will be at fifteen percent, and post-two thousand and two employees will either be at twenty percent or fifteen percent respectively. Because council ninety-four and organized, non-organized employees do not receive the five-year or healthcare in retirement, they receive very limited benefits. They receive three years of a stipend rather than full years of coverage as the police and EMS would receive. Their overall contribution is limited to fifteen percent as of the January one, two thousand and twelve time period. The healthcare, we're anticipating about a two percent increase in the healthcare costs for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year. That still means that we will be funding a fifty-eight thousand dollar increase or about two point nine million, two point nine seven, two million of our budget will go to healthcare costs. That's over the current year appropriation of two point nine one. It's important to note that we are also funding for other post-employment benefits or what's commonly referred to as OPEB costs. Based on new accounting standards that the town is responsible to, to adhere to, we are paying approximately two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in excess of our pay-as-you-go cost into the OPEB trust fund. As the council's aware, the town has established an OPEB healthcare trust fund. That trust fund will have direct contributions from both the general fund and the school fund on an annual basis to amortize the unfunded liability associated with post-employment healthcare costs as we go forward. We also are reporting that the healthcare reserve fund at this point has about a two point two million dollar fund balance. One point seven of that is in town funds and two hundred and fifty-six thousand is in school funds. A portion of that may also be designated to OPEB requirements as we go to the future and try to pay down that unfunded liability. Page twenty-three on the, the document provides a documentation over the last four years of what retirement shares are that the employer pays. As you can see, that the, the police are the only ones that are seeing an increase in contribution rate that'll go to twelve point six percent of their salary will need to be contributed to retirement, to the state's retirement system. EMS is down two point eight percent from six percent down to three percent, and municipals is down about point seven percent. Overall, there'll be about a forty-eight thousand dollar reduction from what current year is for pension costs, and I think it's very important for me to point out that as of June thirtieth of two thousand and eight, the town's pension systems, other than teachers, the town's pension system, and this would be for police, EMS, municipal employees, and school, non-certified, had a ninety-nine point seven percent funded ratio. So we had sixty fi, uh, to put it another way, we had sixty-five point five million dollars in the bank, and if everybody retired and took full actuarial benefit, it would cost us sixty-five point seven million dollars, so about two hundred thousand dollars under funding. So at ninety-nine point seven percent, for all intents and purposes, we are a hundred percent funded. That is based on July first of two thousand and eight. The two thousand and nine figures will probably take us down into the mid-nineties range because we still haven't made back all of what the investment losses were that were incurred during the eight, nine year. But we are still at a very high percentage. People get confused when they hear about the state retirement system having large unfunded liabilities and being at sixty or seventy percent funding ratios. The municipal systems are almost at a hundred percent, and the reason for that is we've been members of the retirement system going back to the early sixties, nineteen sixties, and on an annual basis, the town has contributed what the actuarially determined rate of contribution has been. So they've been on, on, online and in line with what the funding requirements were. We also have major contributions from the employees. Employee contributions at this point are seven percent for uni employees and nine percent with police and EMS. So your police and EMS employees are paying nine cents of every dollar they earn into the retirement system, as well as the town paying the contributory rates that are shown on page twenty-three. Moving on, municipal insurance, I'm not anticipating any, any increase in the overall cost of municipal insurance, either the liability property, excess liability, life insurance policies. We're expecting to receive additional dividends from the insurance trust, which will pay down that cost. It'll be about eighty-eight hundred dollars that'll be coming back to us on their reinvestment in all of the client base. Moving on, capital budget, there's not much explanation is there. We're looking at the capital budget at, down a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from what we'd originally started out at as a means of trying to address less burden on the property tax. Debt service, as I mentioned earlier, we are at a point now where debt service is about fifty-three cents on the tax rate of the twelve dollars and twenty-one cents as forecast. Of that fifty-three cents, the school share is around thirty-nine cents and the town's share is about fourteen cents. I'm not going to deal with the budget message, dealing with the summary of utilities, we'll deal with that tomorrow evening when we do the utility funds in general. I will also deal with the seniors program tomorrow, so I would ask you to jump forward to page M thirty of the budget message because I do want to touch on the school program transfer. Page M thirty starts my review and explanation on the school budget for the ten, eleven year. First, it's important to note that the schools are forecasting a seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar operating surplus. At the bottom of page M thirty, I'm showing you why they're forecasting that type of a surplus. They've got about a one point three six million dollar under expenditure forecast, and they're assuming, receiving six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars less in revenue. The six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar less in revenue is the state reducing the aid to education in the nine, ten year for the savings that were put into place after the school budget was adopted for the, the nine, ten year. As you can see, teacher retirement, pension reform that's shown there, this was, the general assembly, when they approved their budget in June of two thousand and nine, took two actions as far as pension reform was concerned. One was they increased the age of retirement, minimum age of retirement, to a target age sixty-two. The reason they used the phrase target age sixty-two is they weren't requiring everybody to get to age sixty-two, but what they did is they provided a proration so that people with more than twenty years of service may need to get to age sixty-one. People with twenty-five years may get to sixty-one and a half. People with less than ten years would have to get to age sixty-two. They took that value, and they also took the value of income averaging. The way retirements are determined is based on the highest three years of earnings of an employee. The state changed that, and the general assembly changed that last year from a three-year averaging to a five-year averaging. The result was, on an actuarial basis, that in South Kingston, there would be six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars less that, that would be expended or transferred to the state retirement system on behalf of South Kingston teachers. While the, the under expenditure of the six nineteen is going to occur, the state also reduced their education aid by a commensurate six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So it was, for the most part, dollar for dollar that, that was, was taken in. So while they're showing the one point three six million, six hundred and twenty thousand of that is under expenditure based on budgetary actions subsequent to their adoption. Other changes that are anticipated that really do not affect the education program was outside tuition, out of district placements were down a hundred and fifty-two thousand from what they had budgeted. Charter schools, there was less kids going to the charter schools, so they saved a hundred and ninety-two thousand. The state transportation system cost savings was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that was also part of the state's budget that was adopted in June of two thousand and nine, and they had under expenditures on workers' comp and unemployment have been estimated. So when you look at, there have not been reductions in the school program, there have been savings based on overestimates of costs for about one point one million dollars and the loss that's there for the six hundred and twenty-one thousand. When I look at the school budget for the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten year, I am concerned that, that they may need to revise the assumptions that they've used on that seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus. The reason is the things that I've already gone over with the council about the governor's supplemental budget for two thousand and ten. That, their estimate assumes that the cost of living COLAR adjustment would be put into place. If it isn't put into place, but the three percent reduction occurs as a mid-year reduction on state aid, the chart that I provide on the bottom of page thirty-one shows that while the school department's estimate is they would have a seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar surplus, I'm advising that if in fact the three percent were to be put into place as a reduction in, or mid, mid-year reduction, that their surplus would drop to four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. If the governor's budget were adopted as far as the three percent reduction, but the COLAR was not introduced, then they could potentially have about a ninety-two thousand dollar operating deficit for the year. I have talked with the school superintendent, she's aware of the calculations, she agrees with me that the assumptions that I've used in the development of the, of this chart are accurate. As noted further, in the budget message, I've asked that prior to the schools sitting with the council on March tenth, that they be prepared to address this issue on what steps will be taken if in fact the general assembly does other than what the governor, governor has proposed in the nine, ten year. On M thirty-two, I provide explanation as to what my concerns are and what the projected savings are that, that the governor's budget would institute, and the fact that I do not believe that the COLAR will be removed by the general assembly in its totality to implement what the governor's proposal was. the governor's proposal was. I also show on the bottom of page thirty-two what my forecast would be on what fund balance would be for the school fund based on the three scenarios. The scenario is presented by the school department, as well as the scenarios presented with the supplemental budget. Why the school department presented the budget on February ninth without consideration and adjustment for the supplemental budget is for them to describe, but I want to put the items on the table so that they can be fully explained with the council and the school committee when they sit on the tenth. I also think that this detail is important if the council meets with the General Assembly representatives as to what the implications are for that school fund. I next look at the two thousand and ten, two thousand budget as submitted by the school department, and provide the same explanations. That if the governor's budget again assumes that he's going to save five-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars in nine-ten and five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars in ten-eleven from COLA savings by reducing the amount of state aid to education. If those reductions in education aid occur, but the transfers to the retirement fund are not reduced because the COLA isn't removed, the school department's got those five-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-dollar problem for next year. Again, on page thirty-three, I take the school committee's recommended budget and show you what I see as being the changes where the government's, where the governor's budget implemented, both with the COLA and without the COLA. So, again, there could be as much as a four-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-dollar additional reduction that's necessary in the school budget if the worst-case scenario were to present itself. The budget message does not address education aid formula. Again, if we consider what came out of the commissioner's office, in addition to that four-hundred-and-fifty-eight, there could be an additional four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars of additional reductions that would be necessary in the ten-eleven year if that education aid formula were to find itself into statutory regulation. That concludes the budget message, other than the three recommendations that I've provided to the school committee. One is for them to deal with the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten potential losses of the ninety-five thousand dollars of an operating deficit potential. Second is to deal with the four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar target, which would be the ten-eleven year if the COLA were not adjusted and the reduction in aid were to occur. And third is to be prepared to deal with what other cuts are going to be put into reserve, because I fully expect that once the ten-eleven budget is adopted by the General Assembly, that the next governor, who will be elected in November, will be looking at the need for a supplemental budget on the ten-eleven year if that budget is not in balance. And if that occurs, they can't take it from the municipal side any longer, the target area would be school funding. So, that's my short synopsis of what I see the budget as being, and the different issues that are out there. At this point, I would ask that the council review the budget detail for each of the municipal departments. I'd ask you to go to the budget narrative, which I will provide for you, that I provided for you in the budget document that starts on page N one. So, anybody at home that's following along can follow the narrative that starts on page one, N one, and we also can deal with the expenditures that make up the budget. I will keep the chart on the board for the council in terms of the expenditures, and hopefully you can follow along from the narratives as we go forward. I'm going to...
Just one thing that came in late today on that, the school funding mechanism, is that they backed out the group home aid, so that is another three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand that the schools will be receiving according to the person that put the numbers together at the Department of Education. That came in late this afternoon, so we're still working on verifying that, but if that was the case, then that four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand would be less than a hundred thousand that they would lose in total aid as far as next year is concerned. So, a little bit of good news, again, we still need to spend some time to make sure that that is an accurate statement, but that came in late this afternoon around five o'clock.
I'll take it.
But that's dealing with the education aid formula, not the money that would have been lost with the COLA. The four-fifty is still COLA money that would, they would be out of balance with. It's the four-fifty that the newspaper was projecting for the ten-eleven year that would have the three-seventy-five savings based on the aid that Alan just referenced. I think that what I would ask is that you take a break for ten minutes. Dale's going to need to change the tape for the two hours.
I don't think it's going to take seven minutes, but...
Well, why don't we take a five-minute break then, if that's okay with the council?
That's very okay.
I'd like to stop talking for at least five minutes.
No, it's terrible. I just, I can't see a damn thing. I started out all right, but now I look down, it's just completely blurry. No, don't look down, I can't, at this point. Like, way back here. Three-seventy-five. Don't cut a shot of fifteen G every day, let's go. God, it's pathetically bad. This is like, this is just beyond bad. Well, next year we'll be beyond bad.
Don't you have the intermission button you can push on there so folks at home know we're intermissioning?
No, I leave it running because I thought we had a...
Okay. I had to stay in.
Last week was terrible. Changed the cable.
What do you mean, last week was terrible? Video and audio?
The TV.
I wanted to give it to you.
Oh, the cable did that.
I can't really do, give me up for somebody else.
I didn't want to, I kept saying, okay, let's move along with the ball. I could already wait to get here.
We need to supply food.
Too early for me to have dinner. I've got a minute, holy God.
But thank you, I appreciate it.
They discussed it today. They're not...
That's right, I was there.
Did she say that?
Yeah, she did, yeah.
I don't, I think you're right.
See what it's going to...
Hey, Jean. I'm tired of talking, right?
Don't be taking from her.
You're doing one of those.
Yeah.
She was the one who called the school committee to sit up, and she said nothing, if you won't pass any to her, I'm kicking.
That's right, I was there.
Did she say that?
Yeah, she did, yeah.
I don't, I think you're right.
See what it's going to...
Yeah.
I can relate to that.
Sunday?
Hey, Jean. I'm tired of talking, right?
Don't be taking from her.
You're doing one of those.
Yeah.
Hey, Jean. I'm tired of talking, right?
Don't be taking from her.
You're doing one of those.
Yeah.
No, I was going to go around.
You know what I mean?
That's why I'm going to go around.
Yes.
Then to put this...
Then what's the truth?
You might want to...
Sure.
All right. Just where is it?
All this along.
I got paperwork to do.
I got, I got a lot of things to do.
Are we all live streaming or is this just...
We do it all the time.
Oh, ask her. So, we're not live streaming at all, or this is just taped?
Yes.
Are we?
We're ready.
One's probably my husband.
Let's see. Your husband?
I was thinking of Facebook, because I'm only following my friends.
Mr. Transparency. Oh, Mr. Transparency. Oh, good. I don't know how to do a neutral survey, but I'd love to keep one of my... Thank you.
I know I did get the message, but it was set up by them for her to run the thing to educate the people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, just to... The, the thing is, he should have known that. It just goes to show you that he isn't making, he isn't making any, you know, he should have known that. He's so engaged in the process, and so engaged in all this, he should have known that, and he didn't, because it goes to show, but he did. He didn't know.
Yeah, she was, I saw her, she was at the funeral too, and we were in there for an hour. Oh, it was unbelievable.
Who was it?
Oh, Johnny, like, Johnny...
So, it's a good hour, like, hour and ten and late to that line.
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Tell him, say, do him the history of how, when they, when they...
Again, he should be in the process. These people should not be blindly following this man.
They are going to go down the wrong path.
Worse than me with L. I. reading glasses.
But he's incorrect, and they will figure it out, hopefully.
Just now, some people watch.
It's going to happen, it's going. It's the going.
We're pretty excited.
About what?
When I get close to you, the pocket just come up, I'm not calling anybody.
I think Regis was going to turn it on to it.
But I'm sure he's got the TV going, watching basketball.
Who's coming up first?
And that one, that one.
No, I know I'm going.
Okay, let's go.
The chief.
He's got more paperwork to do than she gets.
Did you hear we have seven people watching us? We did? Yeah, we do. Oh, we do now? Oh, you can check, or she can...
Put your tie on.
Oh, jeez, I would have dressed up.
I'm ready, do I have to, like, bang and down?
So, this is, like, marketing, one-on-one, you can find out who, in fact, is... Apparently, the man told us. So, you can follow through. Can we find out who it is?
Okay, Steve, we are on.
We are back. I ask everybody at home to go to the budget narrative, which starts on page N one. They will also be able to follow along with the following section, which starts on GF one, which provides the numbers. So, they can bring those two charts up, and they will be able to follow along. We're going to work from page N one through page N thirty, which is the narrative on all of the accounts between the zero-one-one-oh and account zero-nine-one-oh. So, if we start out, the first account is the town council account, recommended budget is twelve-thousand-five, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, is no change from the current year. The account includes the stipends paid to the town council, as well as the costs associated with materials and supplies, as well as the taping, camera work for the taping of the meetings. The, if, no questions, I'll just keep moving on. Budget adoption process. Budget adoption process is the monies that are necessary to conduct a referendum if one is requested. The projected cost for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year would be ninety-three-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, no questions. Municipal legal services, I'm not recommending any increase in municipal legal services for this year. The total cost of the municipal legal service is about a hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. Of that hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars, a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand goes into retainers with the three attorneys that we use. One is for general legal work with acylitides and Rich. The second is with the zoning and planning function, which is also with acylitides and Rich, and Terry Simpson does the town's prosecution. The projection is that there'll be about twelve-hundred hours of legal work that'll be provided to the town over the three functional areas, and that the cost will be somewhere in the area of about a hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour of compensable hours. Based on the hours that have been spent in the prior year, I did not recommend any change. I sat with the solicitor who agreed as far as the maintaining, the level of support at the hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-dollar level. Probate court, four thousand dollars for the probate judge, there's no recommended change on that. Next account is the town clerk's office. The town clerk's budget for the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven year is a decrease of two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. The major reduction in this office was part-time salary reduction of about ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, was a part-time position that we are not going to fund, that was budgeted in the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten year. Salary increases for the two-and-a-quarter are in there for employees that are offset, that's about a five-thousand-dollar cost increase, and that's offset by that ten-thousand-dollar reduction in the part-time salaries. Very little other change in there, if there's no other change, we'll move forward. Public information, account O thirty-five-zero is what the, what we use to pay for the cost of our internet web serve, as well as email server. We also, this, and the cost of the hosting services. The overall cost is around forty-five-hundred dollars. We're not, we're assuming about a two-hundred-and-forty-dollar reduction from what our costs were in the current year, budgeted costs were, and that's the actual expenditure that we expect to make is forty-six-oh-five in the current year. Canvassing authority, we will be seeing a, an increase in the canvassing authority of thirty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. As the council will wear, canvassing authority pays for one canvassing full-time employee, but it also pays for the cost of the conduct of elections during the two thousand... part-time position that we are not going to fund. That was budgeted in the 2009, 2010 year. Salary increases for the two and a quarter are in there for, for employees that are offset, that's about a $5,000 cost increase, and that's offset by that $10,000 reduction in the part-time salaries. Very little other change in there. If there's no other change, we'll move forward. Public information, account 0350 is what the, what we use to pay for the cost of our internet web serve as well as email serve. We also, this, and the cost of the, the hosting services. The overall cost is around $4,500. We're not, we're assuming about a $240 reduction from what our, our costs were in the current year, budgeted costs were, and that's the actual expenditure that we expect to make is 4,605 in the current year. Canvassing authority, we will be seeing a, an increase in the canvassing authority of As the council will aware, canvassing authority pays for one canvassing full-time employee, but it also pays for the cost of the conduct of elections during the 2009, 2010 year that were no election scheduled. Therefore, for the 2010, 2011 year, we are anticipating a primary that would be held in September and a, the fall election in November, so there'll be two fall elections. Based on the conduct requirements for part-time staffing, we'll, we'll spend about $28,000 to conduct that for salary purposes. We'll also have the materials and supplies cost. So, the overall cost increase is $34,668. I will say that what Dale has attempted to do is to reduce the seasonal salaries there by trying to look at ways of combining districts as far as particularly with the primary. If that's possible, we may be able to cut back on what our actual cost is to conduct those two elections.
Steve, you're not, you're, I noticed in one of the reductions was the police at the polls.
That's correct. We have in the past had off-duty police officers that we paid, paid to be at each of the polls. We are not going to pay for the police services this year. What we will do is to have the active patrol officers will be visiting the poll places and will be available for traffic regulation if that is in fact necessary, but that cost has been cut. Most cities and towns have done away with the, the officer there for the, for the 15-hour day, and we feel that it's necessary based on trying to cut expenditures at this point. Town manager's office, looking at an increase of about $6,100. Most of the increase is associated with the salary increases. Again, no salary increases were provided in the current year. Members of the department will see the two and a quarter percent increase as all other municipal employees. If there's no questions. It is important to note that the narrative that is available for the public's review and on the website provides specific performance measures and goals that each of the departments has listed in the budget document for each of the individual departments. I'm not going to go through those one by one, but that is available for the public's review, and certainly we'll be able to answer any questions that those narratives may generate. The next department is the Personnel Administration. Personnel Administration, we're seeing a $10 decline from what the current year budget is. For the most part, what we're doing is cutting back on professional services, educational opportunity availability. We're restricting that. We've got about a $3,800 increase in the cost of, of personnel. Most of that is tied up in looking at the part-time costs associated with maintaining the personnel records. So, we're looking at a $10 decrease from what the current year is. Next account, 0530, is contribution to the League of Cities and Towns. That transfer is for $11,115. There has been no increase in that account for the last, I think, the last eight years. We're proposing to maintain steady state as we have in the past, past several years. Next account is the Town, Town Hall Operations Account. The Town Hall Operations Account for the 2010, 2011 year will require a budget of $168,434 which is a decrease of almost $9,000. Most of the decrease is that we've reduced what the anticipated cost of heating fuel will be based on actual uses over the last two years, as well as we've reduced the Maintenance of Building account which is a general account that pays for miscellaneous improvements in the town hall by about $4,400. Again, every effort has been made to reduce any accounts possible to minimize what the property tax burden increases would be during this economic, economic time. So, it's $168,434. Any questions if they're on? None, I'll move on to Finance Department. Finance Department, we're looking at a $460 increase over the current year. Again, we have cut back on professional services here from $9,000 to $4,000, so there's about a $5,000 decrease there. That's to address the $5500 increase in our personnel budgets for this department. Again, I think that there's some really good information in the narrative that talks about the different funds that are being managed as well as the accomplishments of the department. This top, the department notably this year, has several accomplishments in terms of dealing with OPEB, dealing with setting up the trust fund, as well as the municipal audit, the reviews of the school budget, and as I say, we're seeing about a $460 increase. I think the public would do well to review some of the narrative descriptions. Tax Assessor's Office, this, this office is up about $5,800. $5,900 of that $5,800 increase is directly related to the two and a quarter percent salary increase. Most of the costs associated with this department, 238,000, 238,000 of the 245,000 is personnel associated. There are no personnel cutbacks assumed in that office for the 10, 11 year, particularly in, in light of the revaluation, there'll be considerable hours that are going to be necessary in dealing with the appeal process. We're also looking at a $1,500 increase in account 0630, the Assessment Board of Review. That is a $1,500 increase which is necessary to be able to compensate the Assessment Board of Review during the time that we anticipate that they will be in, in hearing reviews on the 2010 revaluation. We pay the members at a rate of $20 per meeting, and we're anticipating 30 meetings associated with the revale this year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to Information Technology Division. IT, we're expecting about a $5,000 increase in operations, total budget of about $241,000. All of that, again, tied up with personnel expenses for the two employees that are resident to that, that department. This narrative also provides explanations as to the workload and performance measures that the department measures itself against, and the work detail as to the amount of different activities that they are involved with. It's also important to note that IT also provides direct services to the school department and has been responsible for dealing with the new chart of accounts for the school department and setting that up with the computer systems. Next account is the GIS. GIS, we're looking at maintaining steady state, $8,000, $86,020. Again, this department, $70,000 of the 86,000 is directly associated with personnel. The remaining costs deal with the software maintenance and providing software services through consultant on, on upgrades and migration of the GIS system to a higher grade of, of software that'll provide greater user availability. Performance measures are also documented here on the types of use that GIS is getting as well as the various agencies as well as public that are using the services there. Again, as I've reminded the council in the past, GIS also provides the tax mapping system for the town. All cuts, splits, subdivisions are recorded on digital maps. There is no paper maps at this point that are used in our tax assessment program. So, everything is, is digital and everything is resident to the GIS system for us to be able to do comparisons or to be able to do various modeling on build-outs, that type of thing. Next account, 0650, is the post-audit. We are steady state on that at $22,275 is estimated for the general fund share. The overall cost of audit services is around $44,000 for the town, but we do obtain reimbursement on audit services from each of the utility funds to pay their fair share of the, the cost of, of the annual audit. Planning Board is account 0710, and that's on page N16. The narrative starts there. Planning Board, we're looking at no increases. We're staying at $4,680. This is to pay the part-time salary line item which is to reimburse the Planning Board members for attendance at Planning Board sessions. It's projected that they'll attend 30 meetings or conduct 30 meetings over the course of the year. That would be compensable. Next account, 0720, is the Planning Department. Planning Department budget is posted at $287,640. As usual, the Planning Department has provided the longest narrative description, but I think provides some, some great insight into what a planning function does for the municipality and the outreach it has to all other municipal departments. Of the $287,000, 277 is tied directly to personnel costs, and again, this is all dealing with the two and a quarter percent salary increase or longevity increases that are forecast for the year. No questions, the next account is 0730, and it's on page N19. This is for the part-time salaries for the zoning board as well as the cost of professional services, the transcriptions that are necessary at each of their meetings. Total cost is $11,850. We're forecasting about $1,000 below what the current year budget was. The zoning building inspection, we're looking at a budget of $221,000, $6,200, $6,300 less than the current year budget. We are seeing reductions in the personnel cost with the retirement of a senior employee with replacement at a lower paid, paid individual. We're also seeing a reduction in part-time salaries associated with electrical inspections that are down for the year, so we're not expecting to have as many hours that would be necessary for those services. So, overall, we're looking at a $221,000 budget. I think it's important to note that on many of the accounts where we're reducing overtime on departments that are directly related to the economy, we will have to see increases in future years as the demand for, for paid productive hours goes up. We may see a reduction in the amount of electrical inspections that are necessary this year if the economy turns around and we see construction at higher levels. Those hours that we're budgeting this year will not be large enough to be able to accommodate what the service needs will be. So, I just caution that we are showing reductions because we can based on workflow, but as workflow increases, it will require increases in the expenditure column. The next account is the Police Department. I know that this department overall cost is at $5,086,000 or $13,000 more than what the current year budget is. The Police Department provides a full narrative on page N21 of the budget document. We are looking at, as noted earlier, reduction of two additional patrol officer slots. We would like to be carrying 55 uniform slots in a paid position. We are now down to, to 52, 51 of which would be other than the chief. One of the things we're gonna have to watch is minimum staffing requirements as we go forward and to determine when we hit the breakpoint where we're spending more on overtime dollars than we are on the replacement of, of, of actual additional officers. The cost of personnel is up only $25,000 because the cost of not funding those two officer positions is approximately $80,000. Again, we would not be taking this action other than for the restructuring that's necessary with the budget for the 2010, 2011 year. I would hope as the economy improves that we would see an ability to be able to reinstate those positions. You'll notice in the budget detail, I continue to hold those positions open but as unfunded positions, and I think that we need to look at, at that in the future, future years because it provides us with greater flexibility. We are still maintaining the Community Services Officer for the, for, from the Police Department to work in the school system. We haven't cut back on that, but as we get down to the number of officers that are funded, our cost of overtime, particularly if we have long-term on-the-job injuries that require us to have full pay, we have to replace those people with, with overtime positions, the number of officers that we have may become a problem for us in the future. So, I issue that statement of caution, yet at the same time believe that we can live within our means with the 50, with the $5,086,000 budget. The road program and the shelter program for the 2010, 2011 year, the road program, we're seeing traffic of around 1,450 animals being serviced through the program on an annual basis. The road program just deals with South Kingston program. Our shelter program deals with not only animals impounded from South Kingston but also Narragansett. As the council is aware, we charge the town of Narragansett and provide the services, the shelter services for them. We will continue to have discussions with them on whether part-time hours that both communities are putting out now for weekend or nighttime hours, whether there was some more efficient way of doing it for both communities at a cheaper cost. At this point, it's not budgeted that we will see any change in the way our road program is operated. Total road program is $65,500, about $2,400 less than the current year. Again, we're reducing some of the part-time hours that are associated with the, the program and that were budgeted for in the 9, 10 year. So, this is one of those seven departments that we're reducing part-time hours for as a means of reducing tax effort. The shelter program is also down by...
Steve, Polly has it.
Yes, Polly.
Steve, what has happened to the new shelter? We were going to the animal shelter.
The new animal shelter we had talked about at one time.
The shelter has, the contract for the shelter has been awarded. The contract I signed two weeks ago. What the original concern was, was that we were going to start the construction in late October, early November. If that were done, the contractor was looking for winter condition change order where it was gonna cost more money. What we said to the contractor is that we're not prepared to start the construction this fall. If you're willing to hold your price till the spring, we'll sign the contract so that there will be no winter conditions. It delayed the construction of the project, but I think provides us with a better construction season to be able to put foundations in the ground and to build the project. So, to answer your question, groundbreaking should be within the next two to, two to three weeks, probably a month at the outset, and the contract that I signed requires construction to be completed, I think, by October 1st of this year.
Thank you.
So, we should have the new shelter in place by mid-October. With the way construction projects go, if it's ready to open by November, I'll be very satisfied. So, that is underway. Chief Esquire is responsible for construction management on that project, and I think he's the reason for all of the delays that have happened, Polly.
I understand.
It ain't hard. If there's no questions on the, the two animal programs, I, I do want to say too that, you know, the statistics are important to take a look at when we look at the performance at the, the shelter, and I continue to be very proud of what that shelter is able to accomplish. You know, when they look at a, less than a four percent euthanasia route and that the impalements are, are being returned to their rightful owners or are being then adopted... impalements are being returned to their rightful owners or are being then adopted out if they don't have an owner come to reclaim them, and that, you know, we're only putting down a very small percent of very ill animals that come into our custody. And, you know, our staff should be commended for the type of performance that they provide. And certainly, when we look at the breakdown, we're doing about 50% of the animal intake is feline. And it's not just dogs that we're seeing or other species, whether it's dealing with rabbits or birds, they're all being taken care of. The other thing that's important is that we provide a great deal of medical assistance that's necessary. The shelter is well-respected, and as noted, we're receiving donations of almost $30,000 to $31,000 a year. Those don't go into the general fund. They go into the benevolent fund for animal shelter, but are part of the reason that no tax dollars are going into the construction of the new shelter that we're going to be building. And I think it certainly demonstrates that the community appreciates the services provided there at the shelter. Next department is the Communications Department. This is presented on page N25. We're looking at about a $6,200 reduction from what the current year is, $177,000. There are two full-time and one halftime positions that are funded through this program. And for those that are not aware, the department's two major areas of responsibility are maintenance of the cable plant. The town owns about 100 miles of cable, both aerial and underground. And they're also, this department's also responsible for the enforcement of the Rhode Island Fire Safety Codes for fire alarm purposes. This means that they have to review all building plans for commercial or apartment houses or residential units of more than four units, and they have to do quarterly inspections to ensure that quarterly inspections are made by about 160 businesses that are required by code to have fire alarm systems in their facilities. In addition to that, they maintain over 200 call boxes and 10-box circuits. So there's a great deal of work that's done in a public safety function that normally would be resident to a fire department. But again, for the volunteer fire department, the communications or fire alarm component is not handled by the part-time fire districts. It is handled through the town as a public safety function. The department went to 227 calls over the past year, and we've seen an additional 42 sets of plans that had to be reviewed. So the workload has increased considerably since the Station House, Station Restaurant Fire, and the new Comprehensive Fire Safety Code was adopted back in 2003. So if there's no questions, I'll move on. Next is Fire Services. We have a small consulting contract there to deal with radio service contracts. We also purchased new equipment. There's $2,300 in new equipment that's being proposed for next year. Several of these are Police Department-related to the 800-megahertz system, as well as replacement units for the VHF system. We're going to have to maintain the VHF system for some time in the future until we're sure that we're comfortable with a complete migration to the 800-megahertz system. So we're still going to be dealing with radios of both types. The next account is the Harbor Patrol Program. This department is seeing additional reductions. We're looking at reducing personnel cost by about $1,770. This is another area that I'd like to have direct discussions with Narragansett in terms of common patrol hours, dealing with the salt pond and dealing with Narrow River, and to see whether greater efficiency can be introduced into both systems. But at minimum, we'll be cutting back on some of the hours that have been budgeted in the past for assistant patrol, Harbor Patrol officers to be patrolling the pond. For the most part, this is the Public Relations Program where we are trying to promote boating safety rather than boating enforcement. It's a program that, what we're trying to do is to deal with people that are out to have a good time, to ensure that their good time is a proper time. And I think that the program also deserves a great deal of credit as far as providing good services. As Barry has indicated in his narrative on the performance measures, they're talking about only about two contacts per day. That means that they're actually stopping somebody for boating infractions rather than stopping somebody to make sure that they understand the rules of the pond. So I think that's what we want out there, rather than trying to stop people from having a good time, but ensuring that they're safe when they are on the pond. But we will be reducing, again, the number of hours that are used for that service. Account oh eight seven oh is the transfer that we give to each of the nine fire companies in town. The town provides $400 on an annual basis to each of the fire companies for their use and determination on how to use that money. That $3,600 has been a budget staple for probably the last 30 years. There's no change recommended there. The last account that we're looking at this evening is the EMS Department. Council is aware this is a public safety department, which, again, with a full-time fire department, would see this as a component of the fire department. Without a full-time fire department, we are responsible for providing the EMS services through a standalone department. Our proposed budget for next year is $1.12 million, up approximately $52,000 over the current year. This provides us with a director as well as 16 full-time paramedic-grade employees that work on two transport ambulances and one sport utility, which is used as a first responder. The department is seeing about 28,000 to 3,000 service calls per year, and they're also seeing a need for mutual aid coming into the town from either Charleston or from Narragansett, particularly during the night hours, but we're also seeing us providing mutual aid services to those communities as well. So I think that this is a department that the town is well proud of in terms of the service level that they're able to provide. We have opted to go with a paramedic grade rather than an EMT cardiac care level of service, but we believe that that service level is warranted and necessary for the proper welfare of the residents and the visitors to the community. We are continuing to operate one vehicle on a 24/7 operation. Second vehicle operates between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. at night, 12-hour shift. Sometime in the future, we will be looking at the potential need to increase that service capability. At this point, we feel that the existing personnel can accommodate the service level that service demands that we're faced with, and certainly, we're not looking to expand any programs this year based on budgetary consideration. If there's any questions on that. That concludes the number of accounts we're going to review this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions the council or public may have on any of the items that have been discussed, or if there's further clarification that you need on anything that we've already presented. So with that, Kathy, I'll turn it back to you.
Is there anybody from the council who has any questions for Steve? Anybody? Jim?
Steve, just the number of properties that, above and below, that 16.2% down valuation. Do you have that broken down?
Do I know how many are in that-
Were assessed above and assessed below.
Well, obviously, I would say to you theoretically 50% are below and 50% are above, to come up with an average. I would say to you that we are seeing ranges where, let me get to that page. When I look at the documentation that's been provided today, we are seeing some residential in the high, in the 20% to 24% range reduction, and we're seeing it as low as a 9% to 15%. But the bulk of what we are seeing is in the, in that general 15% to 17% range. I've had a GIS map prepared, and I will have that available for the council. What the GIS map does is it takes every parcel in town that is assessed property taxes and shows by color what the range is. We use that map as a means of challenging the reval data on a neighborhood-to-neighborhood basis so that we can see if there's different colors within a given neighborhood. That way, we're able to check to see why there would be a difference. But that map will be available for the council. Hopefully, I'll have that available. In fact, I've got a copy of it available in my office that you can see subsequent to tonight's meeting.
I'm not sure I'm ready to look at it, but-
Well, I think that the main thing I want to say, Jim, is that we've just got the first data sets in. There's still refinements that are going to be necessary all the way up till June 15th. But the problem with revaluation, and we've done it every time we've had a revaluation, is that you are going to have people on the high and the low end that are going to be impacted either favorably or unfavorably. The average is just the average. Not everybody is going to be at that average. But there are going to be as many above the average as there are below because in a revale, you know, from a mathematical model, for us to have an average, we have to have, you know, a third go up, a third go down, and a third stay the same.
I'm certainly familiar with that, and I understand that, but this new number is absolutely, for, let's say, half the people, certainly a third of the folks, is going to be crippling, crushing the new numbers. This and-
I guess I want to caution you, Jim, is that several communities over the last two years have had revaluations.
And I've followed them very carefully.
Several communities over the past few years have had revaluations where the average rate of reduction on the residential class has been in the 15% to 20% range. North Kingston has just completed their revaluation. Their preliminary numbers are in. They're around a, I believe it's an 18% reduction. South Kingston's in at the 16% reduction. Narragansett completed their revale last year at approximately, I think, a 15% reduction. So what I'm saying to you is that it is not atypical to assume that you would see over the last two years and probably over the next two years to come, revales that will see those types of reductions in value in the 15% to 20% range. And each of those are going to be accommodated where, while the house may be assessed at a lower value with a higher tax rate, the tax levy that would be earned from that house should be around the same dollar amount unless there was an increase in the burden. Are the numbers going to look different? Yes, the numbers are going to look different, but the actual tax bill should be relatively the same. There will be people that will see increases in the tax bill if they did not see a decrease equal to the 16%. But on the other side of that, there'll be as many people that will see a decrease in their tax bill because it was over 16%. So it is not atypical. It is what we anticipated. It is what we expected. And it is the same as what other communities have weathered, and I'm sure as you've checked, East Greenwich had similar experience, so too did Barrington. Of all the communities, Barrington was the only community that I'm aware that there were serious challenges made to the revaluation effort that had been provided through Vision Appraisal.
Yeah, no, that is correct. I'm just going to let you know, I think there are going to be some severe surprises here. I'm not as under-concerned as you seem to be towards this. I think there's really going to be, I think this will be the straw that breaks the home value back, if you will, in a number of our neighborhoods. This is crippling and crushing, this new number. If, in fact, the 1456 per thousand holds, I disagree with you that how our community's going to react to it. There are other communities, I mean, look at Narragansett. The number I had for their revale last year was 10% off. But now we're widening our spreads on the tax rate. Narragansett is currently about 851. Maybe they're going to go to 870 with their new budget this year. And if you add our, let's say, Union Fire Department to this number, we'll be over $15. The spreads keep getting larger. It's an incredible tax burden, and especially when, I think we all know, it's a regressive tax and certainly does not, in most cases, is an indication of wealth. And that's the sad part about this. It's not an indication of wealth and-
I just want to clarify one point. I have never said that I was unconcerned with the tax values. I have said to you that what I am seeing is a revaluation, which is typical and similar to what other communities have seen. The impact that the revaluation will have, I haven't commented on.
Well, I'm going to. I think it's going to be quite severe on a major part of our population.
Certainly, you're entitled to your opinion, but I haven't expressed one.
Well, I think it's one that the council and through your office should be quite concerned about, that the numbers are going to be tremendous. My second question to you, excuse me, the concerns will be tremendous. My second thoughts to you, if this motor vehicle, looking at the state level, if the motor vehicle and the cola, if there are no adjustments by the General Assembly, where is the state going to find the $220 million or the huge, I mean, minus the selling some assets, let's say the $150, $175 million? Where's that money going to be found, and who is, in your opinion, most likely to be affected by it?
Well, I'm not sure that I can tell you what I think the House Finance or Senate Finance is going to do, but if they are in a position where they do not deal with the recommendations of the governor, they have to come up with their own recommendations. Those could, in fact, mean that they look at ways of dealing with the existing tax structure, either increasing the tax structure on certain levies that are out there. Even if they did that, I don't see that they could adjust that much to be able to make up the amount of money that they are going to be short. And that's why I presented the information tonight, because I think that there should be general concern as to what the estate, the state economy is going to look like and the state budget and how it's going to close the 2010 year. But I'm not privileged to the information that the House Finance is working with or what solutions they are attempting to come up with.
But could the General Assembly, you know, we're working, what, 3% off, maybe in state aid to education? Could that number be doubled, tripled? I'm looking at the fact that the state budget, about half of it now, is for the safety net folks, which you really can't reduce. So what other areas could we see that the General Assembly is most likely to target? I mean, certainly, education's the biggest number, but where do they go? Where else do they go?
I'm not sure that there are a lot of areas that they can go. The state constitution requires a balanced budget. State constitution says you cannot over-expend what your revenue intake is. The General Assembly, not the governor, the General Assembly is responsible for the balancing of that budget. The General Assembly's been placed on notice through the Revenue Estimating Conference that there is a shortfall for the current year, and in the budget prepared by the governor's office, that the projection for the next four years is dismal. So at this point, that's why I think it's important for our General Assembly representatives to understand how the state budget impacts the municipal budget. And that's the best message I can give out at this time, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Ella?
I just had a couple of quick questions, Steve, and while we have the medical people here. The 13 AE- The 13 AEDs that we have here in the town, what is the life expectancy and when will they need to be replaced?
Keith?
The AEDs don't need to be replaced. The bigger concern is the value that's in there. Three to five are life expectancy based on the manufacturer. The purpose of budgetary closure of that is that it's based on a future life.
Thank you. And the one librarian's being cut, Steve?
Yeah, there's a-
And is it a conglomeration?
Yeah, the librarian's been cut, and what we were doing is, we're working with part-time people to fill in the hours that that full-time librarian had had. This saves us dollars as far as the fringe benefit costs, but the reduction was made. There won't be, there's not a decline in the service hours that are available, it's just a redistribution.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the council? Is there anybody from the public who has any questions or concerns? Okay, well, then, I just want to say that, just to, for anybody watching at home or who screens, if you go to that message, page three, where Jim was talking about the property tax, it does give an example of what the actual value of a house is, what the tax rate would be in the levy. And then with the 15% residential, again, it is 16.2 on an average. But we'll give the same example of the house at a reduced value with a different tax rate, but the tax levy remains the same. So, it's just an example for people, so to get all upset about, it does kind of make it a little bit clearer for those who got upset. And there are going to be people who'll be on the high, and there'll be people on the low end of it, there's no doubt about that. But again, we're doing everything that we can here as a town. I think Steve gave a great example, and if you go to the budget message and look at the cuts just on the municipal side, the detail of what's been cut, what we've given up for the capital budget plan. So many pages, I've lost my asterisk. But it's in here, and it's very detailed. Oh, it's on page M17 for the reductions from the town side. And I know just in, you know, changes that have come with the school committee and obviously with some of the changes that have come down, I think the school committee is looking to reduce their budget. That, again, was at zero to begin with, just as it was last year. So, that's all I just wanted to add. If there's anybody else? If not, we concluded, and the time is 9:15, and we will be back here tomorrow evening at 6:30. So, please join us. Thank you, everybody.